It's six o'clock and we'll call the meeting to order. If you will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I thought because of Thanksgiving, I would quote George Washington, what he said in 1789. He said that whereas it is a duty to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, to be grateful for His benefits, and humbly implore His protection and favor. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but just some of what he said. That we may then all unite in rendering unto Him our sincere and humble thanks for His kind care and protection of the people of this country previous to their becoming a nation; for the signal and manifold mercies and the favorable interpositions of His providence which we experienced in the course and conclusion of the late war; for the great degree of tranquility, union, and plenty which we have since enjoyed; for the peaceful and rational manner in which we have been enabled to establish constitutions of government for our safety and happiness; that we may unite in most humbly offering our prayers and supplications to the great Lord and rule of our nation and beseech Him to pardon our nation and other transgressions; to enable us all to perform our several relative duties properly and punctually; to render our government a blessing to all people by constantly being a government of wise, just, and constitutional laws. And, and Lord, we just ask that you help us make decisions that are wise, just, and in accordance with our Constitution. And we thank you. Amen.
Mike, if you'll take the roll, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Marcos has asked to be excused. Councilman Blevins?
Here.
Councilman Schlack?
Present.
Councilman Valerius?
Here.
Councilman Lloyd has asked to be excused. Pro Tem Lally?
Yeah.
And Mayor McLeod?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the agenda? We have Mike.
All right, Mayor, before you guys vote on the agenda, I do have an addition of, we do have an addition of our five pertaining to the CN grant for the Veterans Memorial. If the mayor and council would please adopt the agenda as amended.
I think you may have a motion to approve the amended agenda. And as Mr. Schlack?
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of November 15?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blevins. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Before we move on to organizational business, I want to make an announcement to the students who are here. If you will please turn in your papers to me at the end of the meeting. On Mr. Lloyd's absence, I am the collector.
They're not, they're not going to make Mr. Lloyd. He never turns them in anyways, does he? You have no idea, do you? Good evening, Mayor and Council. I missed a milestone back on the previous council meeting. And when I saw the name, I was disappointed in myself because this young man is just a phenomenal police officer. And he is one of those that when he sends an email back to you or something, he's so appreciative of everything you do. And it really makes your day. I actually keep his emails for some to look back on on certain days. But the following employee reached a milestone in the years of service at the City of Allen Park. That'd be Christopher Arnoldi with the Police Department. He reached five years on November 13th. So, congratulations, Professor Arnoldi, and look forward to having him back in the station. He's not out, he's on special duty right now, but he does a great job for the City of Allen Park Police Department. On the street improvement program, the hard rock concrete is finishing the joint ceiling on Rosedale Boulevard, Park Avenue, and Philomen Boulevard in the project areas. For concrete sectioning program, Savon Cement has completed the alley behind the American Legion. That was their last major project. Now they're just working on some miscellaneous utility repairs throughout the city before the weather hopefully does not get much colder here soon. Paving projects, Al's Asphalt will be working on the restoration for Arno Avenue from Beatrice to Warwick Avenue. That's going to happen later this week. They're also working on three alleys for the DDA. That's the alley behind the Wheat and Rye, alley behind Wishbone Chicken, and one between University and Seacott. That's behind the, I believe that was the inner-city Baptist bookstore. I believe Superior Cut was over there as well, and right there by Sylvia's Sub Shop. Wayne County finished resurfacing the Allen Road-Ecorus Roosevelt intersection. I tell you, I don't know about you guys, but it's nice to drive through there now and not have to shake right on row as we go through. The library electronic message sign is now complete. They added the top portion that said Allen Park Public Library. They are still working on a couple issues to be able to dim the sun at night. But once they get that under control, I think it might be a control, a controller aspect that they're trying to work on with the company. And once they get that set, to be able to have that on a regular basis. Talking to Councilman Lally, he asked would we be able to use it for city, for city functions going on? Actually, I think that was one of the intents that they had from the library, was to be able to announce any functions that we have going on within the city on that message board. I think it's a great location because you are stopped at that location almost any direction is going to be visible for that. DDA is hosting an indoor market this Friday, December 2nd. That's going to be from 3 to 7 at the Community Center. I believe it's, they call it the Holiday Market. It should be a great event that they've really had a lot of good success with their markets this past year as well. Next addition to the Allen Park Today Magazine will be delivered sometime next week. A lot of good articles. I do appreciate everything from the department heads in the back that put the effort to get articles to them and take the time to review and make sure everything looks good. So I do appreciate all their help to make that happen. I know the mayor sent this out earlier, but just to accommodate the audit presentation by Clint Moran at the study session on December 13th, we will be starting at 5:15 for that study session. And then they'll do a brief presentation during the media itself for the public to see the results as well. And then just a Christmas closings here. We got Christmas Eve and Christmas Day won't be closed here at City Hall, Friday, December 23rd, and Monday, December 26th. And then for New Year's, New Year's Day, will be closed Friday, December 30th, and Monday, January 2nd. Hard to believe that that is coming around so quickly.
May I have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Thank you. Now we come to public comments. What we ask is that when you come up, you give your name and the street on which you live. You do not have to give the exact address. Comments are limited to four minutes, and all that we ask is that you be civil.
Nancy Nick, Pinecrest Avenue. So I'm up here because of the Historical House. Okay? I've put in many hours, many days, weekends over there, packing up, cleaning up. That museum was left inside, and many of you might have seen it, in horrible condition. Nothing was assessed, nothing was labeled, boxes upon boxes. Okay? So today I get an email saying that the historical, the commission has until Sunday, December 8th, to move all the boxes and items into the storage units. And if not, there's not significant progress by December 12th, the city administrator will step in and finish the job. Well, that's okay, because right here I have three bids. Because our commission, we are up in age, and there is no way that this commission can move all those boxes, everything from three floors, and get it into those bin, those pods that you see at the Historical. So I am not lifting another box. I am not doing another thing over there, because I don't feel that we've been appreciated. So I have these. If anybody wants these three bids, the lowest bid was $1,350. I think the highest one was like $2,300. And they can start on December 5th, and they can get it all moved by this deadline date. So I am rather upset. I don't know if you can hear it in my voice, but I put in a lot of time, a lot of effort there, and trying to get everything done. Two weeks ago, at your city council meeting, I was told to pick out the doors and get it done. We did it that night. I was told to give it to the contractor, which I did. And then I was told later that someone else had picked out the doors and got the doors. So I'm told one thing, and then something else happens. I was told I was going to be brought into a meeting with this administrator in the building department. Never got an email, never got anything. So I don't know what you want from this commission. We're trying the best we can. We're doing the hardest we can. So again, I'm not doing another thing. If you guys want to have a moving company come in, I think for that price, I think it's a good price, instead of having the kids from the high school move it. And there's a liability there, because all of you guys know how steep those stairs are. If a child falls down those stairs, it's going to cost you a lot more than $2,000. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council Mayor Ray Mcgustin Quant. Couple meetings ago, Mikey made a comment. I am one of those last of the Mohicans. And when you said that, that kind of, it kind of hit me. I've been coming up here almost 13, 14 years. I haven't missed very many meetings other than COVID. I come up here and I, I kind of always give you my peace of mind. And we lost a lot of good people that used to come up here, a lot of good citizens. But this is the time of the year that I usually come up here to thank everybody. To thank all you city councilmen, to thank the police, to thank the firemen, who put in long hours, many hours, especially, you know, you guys, that don't get paid a lot. Some people think you guys make a bundle. I got to kind of, kind of tell them they probably make about 30 cents an hour, you know, which maybe you should get ahold of the Labor Department and find out why. But I'm here also to thank the 49 hard-working city commissioners that put in their time, that put off, that put off time to go ahead with their, with their families, are not paid. The only thing, payment we get is right here in our hearts. We do the best we can, and we just do what we try to do. We try to make the city a better place to live, a better place to play in, and everything else. And I'm not going to here to throw no one under the bus. It's just that the commissioners need to be recognized. They need to be recognized in a way that what we're really doing, we put in our time. And our time sometimes is taken away from our family. And I know you commissioners now are finding that out. You didn't realize that you were only going to be here for two meetings a month. You're going to be here maybe four or five meetings a week. So I want to thank you very much for what you have done in the past year. We accomplished a lot, and the commissioners have. And yes, I am a commissioner, and I am in the Historical Commission, and we try to do our best we can. So with that, I want to thank you very much. You have a great day. And if I'm not up here for some reason, I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and stay safe. With that, you have a great day. Thank you very much.
No one else is coming forward? We will close public comments. And for the late arrivals, I am collecting the school papers. We come to the consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the purchasing actions of claims and accounts and payroll report.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blevins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Resolution one, to purchase a Wanko Solar Aero Board trailer and a Short Track trailer at a total price of $10,785,000. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. Comments or questions? Mr. Murray is going to come up and tell us what we are purchasing.
Good evening. The Aero Board trailer is basically a lit arrow for construction when you've got to close a lane down that you've seen on construction projects. The city could use another one due to many construction projects that we have and emergencies, like our water main breaks is typically on the larger roads. That's, so we would like to get another one of those. And the trailer, the other trailer is for moving bricks, blocks, mortar, things of that nature, so when we repair street catch basins, the drains, that we can take our product out there efficiently. We currently have one that's about 30 years old, and it's about past its life.
Anyone have any questions on Mr. Murray?
I had a question from Councilman Lloyd this morning on this topic. Just want to make sure everybody is clear on, his question was, is it coming out of Capitol? And this was a item that Tom had in the Capitol for a trailer for a backhoe. But the backhoe trailer requires a CDLA, and we don't have any money for CDLA. So instead of buying that trailer, shifting the funds over here, I think Jay, we had $30,000.
Yeah, this is about $20,000, almost $20,000 less than we had budgeted for the one trailer.
The only comment I was going to say, how long does these things last usually?
Oh, we got 30 years out of the last trailer. That, we probably could get another year, but it's limping. Our mechanics spend more time fixing it than it's worth. And we have one Aero Board trailer right now. They have solar, just so you understand it. Helps it, and you can plug them in for when you don't have much sunlight. That one we currently have is about 15 years old currently, and it's still operational. You just have to replace batteries and bulbs once in a blue moon.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Resolution two is to approve the two-year extension with HydroCorp to handle the commercial and residential cross-connection program required by the State of Michigan at a cost of $188,376.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Schlack?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. Mr. Murray?
So every city and mobile home park and anything that has more than 1,000 residents is required to have cross-connection programs by the State of Michigan through the Eagle and through the EPA actually for the whole national country. This is a program that they do as a third party for us, and they take care of all the inspections, all the paperwork, all the filings, everything for the city. Most cities, almost all cities in southeast Michigan have HydroCorp, because there's not another company in southeast Michigan that does this. The only other cities that do not have HydroCorp are the ones that have in-house. They've had some of their staff trained, but that staff only does this. So it's easier for the city to hire a third party and put them under contract than it is to have one and two employees just dedicated to this project. Therefore, they're offering us this two-year contract, but it also has built into it a yearly extension after that of the rate of index, if we were to want to enact that past the second year.
Any questions? Um, I have one. How, how long do you think, anticipate will take until we're completely done with this project?
You are never done with this project. You have to do so many homes per year, and you have to do so many commercial entities per year. That's required by law. It's a never-ending regulation, basically, yes. So we'll always have to have, the city will always have to have somebody doing a cross-connection program till they decide, if they ever do, to not have that.
Definitely a needed program, but it's another unfunded mandate.
It is.
Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Resolution, to approve the contract for the purchase and installation of a new pole sign for the City Hall Police Department to MI Custom Signs in the amount of $14,865. Motion.
Motion.
Go ahead.
Motion by Mr. Lally?
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius.
This is one of those items where it's a motion by everyone and supported by the council. So this here is a replacement for the sign out front. I think sufficiently we can refer to it as a lally pop sign at all occasions.
Just a minute.
Not the lally, not the lally pop.
This will be very similar to what you see now, with the exception of a crown of some sort that mimics the design of this building. It will be also backlit, the logo, city logo will be in there as well. We looked at the header, but kind of give an idea of this design, make sure everybody's okay with it for tonight. And using MI Custom Signs, I do want to mention, as I do in my memo, Kyle Power was instrumental in helping me get with Ken Marino from MI Custom Signs. I appreciate that. More so, I want to, you know, show people, we do try to work amongst the departments and that Kyle has a relationship with that gentleman through the dashboard and the Zamboni wraps that they've been using at the arena there. So we appreciate that. This will be under a professional service contract, as the design is proprietary to that MI Custom Signs. The amount of $14,865 coming from account 401-00095-450, those will be the ARPA funds that we receive from the federal government.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Resolution, to ratify the action of the city administrator regarding the purchase and delivery of two storage containers for the Historical Museum through Mario Savon. Savon Cement in the amount of $5,264. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally.
This is a request to ratify the action. We've purchased the two containers, those two 20-foot containers that are in the driveway at the Historical Museum. I went through the service using Mario Savon, Savon Cement Inc. We, he was familiar with this process for his own purchase at his, at his location that the containers are, the 20-footers. They'll hold, I am a little bit concerned, there's a lot of stuff in the house here in the museum. But this will definitely hold majority of it, and then we'll figure that you rest off from that point.
Mark, can you kind of give them some information about the, the cost difference between renting two of these?
Yeah, so the difference on the rental, I looked at that using Mobile Mini. They had an initial cost of $2,200, and then a recurring cost of $686,68. The purchase cost for the, for the units is $5264. So in about five months of purchase, purchasing them, the difference would come at about five months. Which I think we probably will be using them for storage a little bit longer than that. So I think we're better to be the purchase on that, at that side. This will come out of account number 101, 172-955-803, which is the administration line item for the Historical Museum. This is not the Historical Commission Astro Fund. These are not those funds.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Resolution five is to accept Allen Park, a resolution for Allen Park to accept the Brand Park Vietnam Veterans and Beyond Memorial and Champagne Park Blue Star Memorial grant from CN Railroad. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. We'll get filled in on that.
Yeah, so as I passed this out earlier, and I do appreciate you adding to the agenda, the question came out, was this is the application to submit, and because we, you know, we had to, you know, no, this is not, this is actual grant award. So we just submitted this back, was submitted on October 26th, after the council meeting approval, to submit the grant application. And we heard word today from American Bloom and the CN Railroad that we were granted the, up to $25,000 for the memorials. We've done some work on the, some drawings, they're rough sketches. I apologize. When you read the magazine, you see these sketches.
They're magnificent.
My drafting skills, my drafting teacher would not be happy. My architecture.
You did a good job.
They are very nice.
We did the best we can, and we were obviously convinced the American Bloom and CN Railroad that this is a great project. So this will fund the landscape material. This is not for hardscape, so no concrete, no brick pavers, no benches, no walls. This is all landscape material, dirt, mulch, anything associated with that, and, and labor as well. For the Brand Park Memorial, this is a project that got started by the Community Affairs Committee of the Council a couple of years ago, I think it was. It started with a donation to Parks and Recreation for some flagpoles. Seven flagpoles were purchased for Brand Park as the start of the project, but that's kind of where it was left. So this money now will come in to help landscape it. We're going to use matching funds are going to come from Act 51, non-motorized, donation or non-motorized funds. I need to request a donation through the Festivus Commission for a flagpole, and then Parks and Recreation, DPS Administration will have a contribution. And then the veteran organizations themselves have been fundraising as well to put some final touches on there. But we started looking at this, as I mentioned at the last, when we went to submit this, we started looking, this is a great project for Brand Park, but at the same time, we have a memorial at Champagne Park that has been kind of neglected. It's of overgrowth. So we're going to go in there and clean that up, put new sidewalks in there, put a Blue Star in there, relocate the flag to a different location within the memorial, and really give it the justification that it deserves, while we also create a new veterans memorial for Brand Park for the Vietnam Veterans and Beyond. So I think this is a great, great opportunity that we've had to submit for these grant funds, and I'm just very thankful we're going to get them.
Can I answer questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is carried. Thank you. And we move on to council comments, and tonight we'll start with Mr. Schlack.
Thank you, Mayor. Be short and sweet. I want to thank everyone in attendance for coming. I want to thank Parks and Rec for really doing a great job at the Lady Christmas Day Parade. It was a little cold, but those who attended, looked like they had fun. And Mrs. and Santa Claus were there in attendance, receiving the city, key to the city. And I also want to say to the commissioners, I've said this many times, I definitely appreciate all your hard work that you do, and the efforts and time. I, that doesn't escape me though, how much work that's put into there. So I want to truly thank every commission that serves the city. We would, you're the lifeblood of the city. You make the city great to live in. So I want to thank you, thank you, and thank you. I sincerely mean that from the bottom of my heart. And with that, short, sweet for me tonight, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blevins?
Well, you know me, I can't be short and sweet. Yes, I can. In fact, I'm the only one up here now that's not a parent, so, just saying. And congrats to Mr. Lloyd on his newborn. Next, just one, some updates, events happening. I heard on the social media that the Canadian Pacific Holiday Train is going to be coming down by Thunderbolt Lanes on Thursday night, assuming it's from like 8 to 10 o'clock-ish timeframe around that area. Please make sure you go out and support the market, Holiday Market on December 2nd. It's, was way overdue with the sign in front of City Hall. Again, that was a hammy, uh, hammy down from the past, and... From the past and the library sign looks fantastic, a digital sign so we can put things and I've been saying since day one. If we can put information so that it could be. And for more communication to the residents, just like the magazine that we do quarterly. December fourth. The fire station Santa is going to be there from ten AM to noon. So make sure you go out and support there as well. I, what I love about this time of year is everyone decorating their houses. And I just, everyone just keep up the good work with that around the whole city. Um, I know in the past. It was mentioned that the DDA would budget. Um, some. Lights or decorations or something for. Northern Allen Park, Allen Road and E Course Road. And I hope again in the future, something can. Be brought up with that, um, just like our snowflakes in downtown in Park Avenue. Just so that all of Allen Park can have a connection with the holiday spirit. To the commi, commissioners, as I said at the historical commission a couple of months ago. I do appreciate what you guys do every single time you go in that historical museum. And from your meetings. From pass of the, uh. Ice cream socials and the, uh, working at the, uh, street fairs and stuff. And I do see that. You volunteers, the heart you have for the city and I always encourage more residents to please. Volunteer and join a committee or volun, uh. Do something for our city. But as lays on for the historical, I, again, I am proud of what you guys have done so far to that house and. And I hope in the future we can move forward in a positive way. So that you guys can get back in there and do what you guys done. Uh, every Wednesday of presenting history to the city. Uh, residents. And again, I hope everyone. Just, just think of others and, um, stay optimistic and stay positive, especially during this holiday season. Because you don't know what people are going through and look after your neighbors. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, Charles. Mr. Lally?
Yes. I too want to thank the commissioners for an excellent job you guys do with Park Avenue there. I think it's wonderful. I am very surprised it, uh, had a little mishap or whatever. I hope that we could take care of that and continue doing a good job as you always do, all the commissioners here in Allen Park. And there was a, if you went to the, the Christmas parade, it was cold like Councilman Schleck said. But I tell you, it was a very nice, uh, nice parade. It was cold, but it was good. And I could see a lot of people out there. That's the spirit, you know, the good times. And don't forget to give your papers to the mayor. All right. But anyway. I do want to thank. Our city administrator, Mark Gibby, for doing an excellent job. On a CNN. Railroad grant. That was the best thing that, that's happened. It's ve, very nice. I know it's just landscaping and it's not concrete, but I tell you, we're going to keep doing this fundraiser for both memorial parks. Especially the Vietnam Memorial and Beyond and the memorial on Champagne, which. Does need a lot of work there. A lot of work. There's a memorial up there. You can't see it because of the bushes all over the place. So that's got to be taken care of. And the digital sign on the library, that was a wonderful thing. Now that, now that, that, that tells me Allen Park on, uh, Allen Road is the main street. If that sign's there, it's better than Southfield because Southfield you got to watch when you got to stop and go. Over there in, uh, in Allen Road, it's nice traffic slow, but you can see the sign right there and it's going to advertise all kinds of stuff. For the city of Allen Park. Is that right? Yeah, see. And that beautiful job on the sign outside, that was nice. I'm glad that the other sign is going down and replaced with this sign. Other than that, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming tonight. God bless you and good night.
Thank you, Tony. Matthew?
I just wanted to start by thanking and well congratulating, uh, Dan Lloyd and his wife on the birth of their son. Also wanted to. If you haven't been in Ice Arena lately, it looks pretty awesome with all the dashboards and everything else. Uh, check it out. I think Kyle said he yesterday at the Parks and Rec that he's got like five more to sell. It'll look pretty cool, uh, when you're in there with the advertisements and everything else, uh, on the dashboards. Uh, wanted to congratulate Chris Arnaldi again for five years of service to Allen Park PD echoing the sentiments of. Uh, Mr. Gibby. Uh, I've known Chris since he was a high school student at Allen Park. Not only is he an awesome police officer, but he's an awesome person in general. My son was involved in a, uh, his car broke down coming down the hill, the worst possible place you could break down at. And, uh, Chris was the first officer to show up and help my son push his car out. And then he actually called me. Cause he pushed, they pushed it into someone's driveway right across the street. So I went up there, but it was nice. Chris was like, hey, Mr. V. And I'm just like. Yeah, Chris. He goes, yeah, I'm here with your son. And I'm like, oh no. But it was, uh, turned out to be nice. And like I said, I, I couldn't have had a better, uh, police officer in person, uh, take care of him, uh, for that instance. So. Continues to do a great job, be so dedicated to the city and, uh. Again, just loves what he does and continues to do it every day. So. Also just echoing the sentiments of everyone, the commissioners. Everyone that serves on a commission, they do it voluntarily. They, all their time and energy is simply because they love the city of Allen Park. That's it. And I can't simplify it anymore. Uh, every hour they put in as a commissioner or serving on a commission is simply because. They love the city much as they love them and want to do more of it. So I appreciate all their time and energy and all their hard work and efforts. So with that, I yield.
Thank you. Michael?
I just want to say the Christmas parade was fantastic. It's the first time since it ever started I actually watched it on Park Avenue. I said this year neither of my boys are in Cub Scouts. They're out. I got my three-year-old and I thought I'm going to just watch it. So it was cool. But I, one thing I noticed, it, it is amazing. How much bands have shrunk over the years? I went back and looked at a photo of one of the Memorial Day. This band, it was like three photos. It was in Allen Park. It was in. It's just amazing that not that many people play in the band anymore, but that always made it fun. But, um, also. You made a comment about parents. Well. I was here once, but now I'm looking at kids that were literally kids and now they're the same age as my son. So I'm looking out there. I remember some of them being in first, second grade, so. It is amazing. Um, also like to bring up for the students. Go to Michigan.gov/vote. One thing. I discourage and people look at me cross-eyed is voter drives. Because you think, well, they're just getting me registered to vote. Never, I, I don't care who they are unless it says the state of Michigan. Or a government office, never register to vote with. Anyone at like a booth somewhere. But the best way is go to Michigan.gov/vote. So. I want to say that. And with that, thank you all for coming out tonight. God bless you and good night.
Thank you, Michael. Just a quick, I'm going to do a few announcements. An email today and just so everyone knows. That we, like all of our other residents, are going to be the recipients of our winter tax bills. Treasurer has advised that, um, they were delivered to the post office today for mailing. So look for that. As an early Christmas present. I, it was mentioned that our councilman Lloyd became a father on, uh, November twentieth of. A bouncing baby boy. They didn't know what they were having, but, uh, they had, um, a little boy named Robert Murphy Lloyd. Everyone is doing well. Baby was two weeks early, but everyone's doing fine. I do want to mention, um, in passing that, um, we lost a centenarian, uh, in Allen Park. A gentleman named Claude Freeburne, who had turned one hundred and seven in August. Received a letter from myself on behalf of myself and council. He lived at Maple Heights. Been sending him a letter for a number of years. Um, this year, uh, a woman from Maple Heights actually came by. After we were closed and left me a picture of a cupcake she was bringing. And I had hoped to. Uh, meet Claude next year, but he passed away on November the thirteenth. He, uh, in the picture that I'm looking at from his obituary, he looks as though he probably could have gone on another ten years, but I think he just got tired. And, uh, but we have plenty of centenarians here in Allen Park, so maybe it's something that's in our water. I think other than that, I have not much else to say. I think anyone who has been serving with me and has served with me before. Uh, knows the, um. Respect that I have for all the commissions. I have done everything I possibly can to recruit new members. To make sure that the commissions are recognized. We, we hold swearing ceremonies at council meetings now, which had not been done. I send out emails to businesses and friends and relatives and then ask anybody I bump into. Uh, to please look at the applications. Having volunteered on a number of entities myself, I know what's involved. And I know the passion that's involved. And I know that as Ray says, gratification you get is from doing good for your community or your city. And as with everyone else here, we encourage residents to take a look at what we have to offer. You can sit back and, and complain about your community or you can step up and make a difference. And, um, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally. Second by Mr. Valerius. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned at six forty-two. Thank you all very much.